I will call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. And I will start by saying the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaqie, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as circulated? Detective Mayor Tanner, seconded by Counselor Thorburn, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Are there any announcements from members of council? You know, still kind of, like post-COVID, it's just going to be 45 minutes of announcements. I'll just announce that hopefully people have seen this, it's the passport to taste. So we have over a dozen restaurants in town that are participating in this. You can either pick one of these up at one of the participating restaurants, or Town Hall, or you can download it off the town's website. And what you do is you go to a participating restaurant, and then when you order from there, or craft brewery I should say, in town, they'll give you a sticker, three stickers, and you can either drop this off at one of the participating restaurants, we'll collect it from there, or in Town Hall, there's a box in the foyer, and you'll be entered to win one of three $100 gift cards for a restaurant of your choice. So this is a great way to support local as we kind of move out of the pandemic. And Wednesday, apparently, we're going into phase four, which is exciting news, as we hit our 75% of the first dose vaccine target. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Bridgewater and Area Chamber of Commerce, CKBW, Country 100.7, the Social Breaker, and our team here at the Town of Bridgewater for sponsoring this. So make sure you support local and pick up one of those passport to taste, and maybe you can win a $100 gift card. Moving on, we have some staff introductions. So I think we'll start with, I see we have our Director of Community Development here, so we'll start with Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. It is my great pleasure to introduce two new staff in the Community Development Department to you this evening. Yang Feng is joining us remotely on the screen there. Yang Feng has joined us as the Senior Energy Program Manager for Energize Bridgewater, and will lead the development and deployment of the community-wide energy management system that will provide advanced energy efficiency and renewable energy solutions for the town's residential, institutional, and commercial sectors with the objective of enabling deep energy retrofits. Yang earned his Master's of Engineering degree from Jia Tong University in Shanghai, China, in 1993, and has more than 10 years of experience in the energy conservation and demand management sector. He's joining us from Electra Utilities in Vaughan, Ontario, where he implemented energy conservation projects and programs, and worked on emissions reduction strategies and municipal energy management action plans. So we're really excited to have Yang join us. He's still currently in Ontario, but has plans to get here, and we're really happy to have his industry experience to help meet Energize Bridgewater's project targets. So welcome, Yang. This is Bridgewater Town Council.
Welcome.
Hello? Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. Hi, thank you. Yeah, thank you for your great introduction. So, good evening, everyone. So I'm Yang Feng, actually, I'm the Senior Energy Program Manager. I joined this group and Energize organization about a little bit more than a month ago. So before Bridgewater, I worked at a power utility company in Toronto, Ontario, as a technical advisor for energy conservation and demand management department. In that role, I provided energy conservation services to our customers. I was attracted by Bridgewater's ambitious energy poverty reduction program. I hope I can take advantage of my experience and make contributions to this program. I'm looking forward to seeing you in person soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we're looking forward to seeing you in person when the time comes. Thanks.
Thank you, Yang. I'm also very pleased to introduce Aaron Bliss. He's our planning and GIS technician in community development. Aaron's sitting right here. So he's going to be the primary departmental resource for mapping and spatial analysis, and provide technical assistance and information to staff and the general public for planning and development control programs. Aaron recently graduated from Dalhousie University with a Bachelor of Community Design, and also has his Advanced Diploma in Geographic Information Systems from the Nova Scotia Community College. Aaron has several years of experience working for public and nonprofit organizations, primarily on active transportation and housing affordability projects, and we're thrilled to have Aaron and his skills join our team as well. So welcome, Aaron.
Yes, welcome.
And I'd like to introduce Todd Jefferson. Todd's, well, not the podium, sure. Todd was hired as the two-year term as the maintenance technician two at the engineering department. Todd will be helping out our other facility staff, complete renovations, repairs, and maintenance to both town and PSC facilities. Todd's background included operating his own carpentry business for eight years, he worked in Argentina for seven years as a plant manager, and returned to carpentry in 2010 and worked with two other contracting companies. We'd like to welcome Todd to the organization.
Welcome, Todd.
Thank you. Very happy for the opportunity to work for the town, looking forward to all the challenges. I have quite a list ahead.
That you do. No, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't want to pass you up. Like, Aaron, if you had a big speech to make, but you can go right ahead. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
This is your time. Talk with any of you.
Yeah, I just quickly wanted to say, so nice to meet you all. I'm very new to the town of Bridgewater. I haven't had much experience in the town before, but I've been loving the town, it's so beautiful, the people are so kind. I've been really enjoying working for Jessica and Nick. You guys have an amazing team working for you, and I'm really excited to see what my future holds with the town of Bridgewater. Yeah, it's been a really great experience so far. Thank you all so much.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
Scoring points right out of the gate. Well done. Welcome to everybody. Our next item is, we have the minutes of June 28th, 2021, regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions there? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please? Moved by Counselor Caldwell, seconded by Counselor McDonald. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And we're right down to planning items. We have the rezoning of 677 La Havre Street. The planning analysis report. Now, turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, this is an application for 677 La Havre Street to rezone the property from general commercial C5 to two-unit residential R2. So, an application was received May 12th, 2021, for rezoning at 677 La Havre Street. As I mentioned, the current zoning is general commercial C5, and the owners are requesting rezoning to two-unit residential R2. It's the owners making the application, they're looking to assemble the land for sale. The zoning is to enable the subdivision of potentially three separate lots for single-unit dwellings or two-unit dwelling development. So the property is located on La Havre Street, abuts the La Havre River, is formerly the site of the Crosoncho warehouse Quanzet hut, but it's currently vacant, structure was demolished in 2010. General commercial, the current zone allows a broad range of commercial uses in typically high-volume traffic areas, primarily right at the extensive town, the entryways into Bridgewater. I often refer to the general commercial zone as a highway-style commercial zone. Car dealerships, fast food restaurants, things of that nature are permitted. Two-unit residential, the target zone, the zone which the property owners wish to accomplish, accommodates single-unit dwellings and two-unit dwellings, and those two-unit dwellings could be duplexes, or they could be semi-detached. So, municipal planning strategy is the document that outlines general permissions for each zone and policies that shape development. So it encourages a mix of land uses, compact development, densification, a range of housing options, and improved appearance of built form and pedestrian experience as well. The land use bylaw carries out the intent of the municipal planning strategy through specific regulations, things such as land uses, property setback requirements, landscaping requirements, signage, parking. So, a little excerpt from the zoning map. So the subject property, again, it's currently general commercial. There's a mix of zones in the area. Next door, there are R1-zone properties, there's a number of single-unit dwellings there. Across the street, Farmers Co-op is on the one side of Elm Street, and the former Ben's Bakery outlet on the other, those are both general commercial. Ben's Bakery is now occupied by Flourish. And the old Crosoncho office. And then next to that, I believe there's two single-unit dwellings heading towards Silver's Hill. Across the river, we have High Density Residential and R1. So in that high-density residential lot, there is the recent development of three eight-unit buildings. That's right. So, the municipal planning strategy has something called the Future Land Use Map. This property, and this is a current excerpt from the Future Land Use Map, this property is designated low-density residential. So it's, Future Land Use Map is, you can look at it as a bit of a generalized zoning map, but policy is attached to the Future Land Use Map. Generally speaking, if the target zone with the rezoning application, in this case, R2 is in the low-density residential umbrella, Future Land Use designation, generally speaking, that means it's supported by policy. So in this case, yes, the 677 is designated low-density residential, which again is R1 and R2. A public participation meeting was held on June 23rd. It was actually virtual. One member of the public was in attendance. The main concern was that the town would consider rezoning that would allow residential in an area known for flooding, potentially putting those future residents at risk. There was a suggestion made, the properties along the La Havre River that are at risk of flooding, be rezoned to a conservation zone. The attendee experiences flooding on their own property, and so that is their concern. The municipal planning strategy has some objective statements. Control land use development in a manner that will minimize conflicts, yet mix compatible land uses to promote diverse and convenient neighborhoods, encourage compact development to maximize the town's infrastructure, so its services, and to promote healthy, close-knit neighborhoods. Enable the development of a full range of housing options, and control land use in development in a manner that will preserve, enhance, and protect the natural environment. The municipal planning strategy has implementation policy. IM6 are the general considerations for council, and the way that reads is council shall consider the following, and there's a number of criteria there, and here's a few. These aren't directly from the municipal planning strategy, but generally speaking, the wastewater vetement bylaw will apply to any proposed development, so that will be $1,500 per dwelling unit if and when this property is developed. Transportation and parking, proposed development is, oh, okay, these are comments, sorry. Our proposed development is located on our Ontario Street, intended for higher traffic volumes, so it's adequate to support the intended use. This would be a staff recommendation that sidewalk be extended on the riverside of La Havre Street. It currently stops a property or two short of the subject property. So, to provide this property with adequate, safe, and convenient access, pedestrian access, that might be a future project for the town to take on. Environmental constraints, there's a map of the municipal planning strategy, and it identifies property slopes less than 20%, so that's good. But flood risk at 65% probability with 100-year storm and 2.2-meter storm surge. So what that means is that there's a 65% chance, 65% chance while there's 100-years storms, so fluvial flooding based on 100-years storm with a 2.2-meter storm surge. So adequate engineering and environmental controls will be necessary for development if and when that occurs. Importantly, the property is located within the La Havre River Development Agreement area. This has been established for quite some time, and it's an overlay zone, and what it says is that any development really has to go through a development agreement. Within the policy criteria of that development agreement process, it states that council must refer to the Integrated River Coastal Hydrodynamic Flood Risk Mapping of the La Havre River Estuary in Town of Bridgewater 2013, what we refer to as the flood risk study, when approving development agreements in the La Havre River Development Agreement area, to ensure flooding and erosion risks are reasonably mitigated. And that says reasonably mitigated, but there is also policy there, I'd say criteria, in the development agreement policy, so it says again, council shall consider, but how it reads is no development is permitted on property where flooding, or yeah, flooding presents a risk to people or property. So yeah, 677 La Havre Street is located within the La Havre River Development Agreement. The owner will be required to go through a development agreement process if and when they do develop that property. So this application is for the rezoning, so it's proposing a change in what uses may be developed on the property. This is not for the actual development, that would be a separate application. Just to summarize, La Havre River Development Agreement area, consistency with, it requires consistency with the downtown waterfront master plan, a flood risk mitigation plan by a qualified expert, and so we need a design engineer to put together what we would refer to as a flood mitigation report, so including erosion and sedimentation, grading, storm water. Shall include measures to maintain or enhance healthy soils and soil which serve the repairing functions of the riverbank. Additionally, the La Havre River Development Agreement has some more aesthetic criteria to adhere to, functional integration with budding properties, there are buffer screening requirements, whereabouts of conservation zone, that's not applicable here, but integration of landscaping, site planning, building design orientation, to contribute positively to the streetscape and the riverscape. And a landscaping plan is required. Environmental management policy of the municipal planning strategy shall be policy of council to establish minimums, development setbacks from all significant water courses in the land use bylaw, accordance with MAP6, environmental constraints, to help minimize flooding, pollution, sedimentation, and erosion. So the land use bylaw does have a setback to significant water courses provision, so it requires a minimum of 26-foot from nearest main wall to the river, so that's the rear yard setback. Within that same provision, it does grant some flexibility if a flood mitigation plan, erosion sedimentation plan, storm water management plan are submitted and to the town's satisfaction, and in that case, they could go somewhere between, so like I said, it's a 26-foot setback to start with. If we have approved plans in place, they could get as close to that 13 feet, which is the, well, in the target zone, in the R2 zone, the minimum rear yard setback. The downtown waterfront master plan, one of the guiding principles is sustainability. Says the ecology of the La Havre River should be enhanced, addressing implications of sea level rise and climate change. Best practices for storm water management should be integrated into the urban design, assisting with rainwater runoff and erosion mitigation. So now the downtown waterfront master plan is referenced in the MPS, but the two were being, the two were underway at the same time, so they go back and forth. It's downtown waterfront master plan is referenced in the MPS, but it also goes the other way. So summary of analysis. Concerns raised during the public participation meeting around flood risk to development located adjacent to the La Havre River. They are addressed through the La Havre River Development Agreement process. According to existing policies, development is permitted within the La Havre River Development Agreement if certain criteria are met, so again, they need a flood mitigation plan. Further, the proposed development meets land use designation, low-density residential, for the sub- for the subject property and other policies of the municipal planning strategy. So staff are contemplating a review of the planning documents, more than contemplating. It will hopefully be starting soon. It's an important review that's typically between five, 10 years here, where staff and the public and council primarily get to look at the municipal planning strategy, land use bylaw, subdivision bylaw, and make updates as a whole. So it's a large, comprehensive process. So there could be consideration for revisions to the La Havre River Development Agreement area to further address flood risk concerns. There could be this change to the conservation zone, as was suggested at the public participation meeting. That is an option through the planning document review process. It will be a comprehensive review. The public and council will both be heavily involved. So the requirements of the La Havre Development Agreement will be certainly reviewed through the process. And so staff recommendation is for council to give first consideration to propose MAP amendment of the land use bylaw and schedule a public hearing for August 9, 2021. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council? Council Thorburn?
Yeah, I'm still concerned about the flood risk. And I know we've denied applications by Vetland Bridge and down by Gnosis because they didn't take or do the required initiatives to develop the properties there at the time. And we've had two floods since I've been in the fire department, and they come quick with ice jams, and you don't have a lot of time. And it was a nice sunny day, and we ice jammed up there on the new bridge and flooded that within minutes. So I'm really concerned that if we don't have a plan in place to prevent flood, that what's the point in changing the zoning?
So as I understand it, the developer would have to present a plan that's acceptable to engineering to mitigate your concerns that are very valid. So if I can just piggyback on Council Thorburn's question, is that even doable? Like with developing that close to the river under the development agreement process? And what staff would require to essentially prove that they can mitigate that risk? Is that possible? Or is it a?
Well, it's certainly possible. It's possible. I can't really speak to the engineering requirements that would be needed. Could be a range of things, bringing the elevation of grade up. I will go back a bit. This property, there have been two other applications in the La Havre River Development Agreement area over the past 15 years. Neither did get to the final approval stage. I can't say for certain that that was because of flood risk, but that was certainly one of the discussion items for both of those applications. One was this property. So about, close to 10 years ago, just about 10 years ago, there was an application for subject properties as well as the properties across the street, same property owners. There was a flood mitigation plan as part of that application. And then the property owners did the work as recommended by the flood mitigation plan. And that resulted in the construction of a seawall there. So they do have a big armored wall along the La Havre River for this subject property. Ice jamming is certainly a major concern in that section. I will say that this property in that section of La Havre Street is probably the highest of all of them, so those single unit dwellings beside it do certainly experience flooding. But I think that was the case prior to 2012, and then the seawall was put in place. So they may be fairly close. MAP6, the environmental constraints map, and the flood risk study both identified this property as being vulnerable, 65% chance during 100-year storm, 2.2-meter storm surge. Bottom line, no development is permitted on this subject property through the development agreement process that presents a flood risk to property or people. So that flood mitigation plan is crucial. And hopefully they can achieve it, but there is a chance also that they can't.
And I'm assuming that the applicant is very well aware that even if council goes through the process of doing the amendments to the zoning, does not necessarily mean that council will then approve the development agreement because those are two very separate items.
Right. And they are aware, yes.
Deputy Mayor?
So Nick, I think I heard you say they had to be about 26 feet off that water. So what is the depth of that lot? Like 26, to me, I know that lot, but 26 feet off the water, and then you've got a new sidewalk that we're considering putting in in front. Like, does that even give enough development area for that, this type of housing?
I've looked at where the curve is in relation to the front property line, but front property line to the ordinary high watermark, which is what we would measure, how we would measure the depth of this lot, so the high watermark on the river is plus or minus, it varies, but it's around 100 feet. 26 foot is the starting point. So if this were an as-of-right development, this is a rezoning. But when it does come time to develop this property, if it were as-of-right, they would have to comply or adhere to a 26-foot, 8-meter setback from the back wall to the ordinary high watermark. However, that provision does allow for a flood mitigation plan, erosion sedimentation plan, stormwater management plan. If submitted to our satisfaction, they could actually encroach within that 26 feet to 13. So starts off 26, but with approved plans, if they want to go through that process with an engineer, get some plans drawn up and approved by the town, then they could get as close as 13. Through the development agreement process, both that provision, that increased setback to significant water courses, that 26-foot setback requirement is a guide. So when you go through a development agreement process, the land use bylaw provisions become guidelines. They are where we start in the discussion, but it's possible through the development agreement process to actually get something built even closer. Again, it's all subject to that flood mitigation plan, erosion and sedimentation plans.
Yep. And so you also mentioned a review of the LRDA. What realistically is the timeline on that? And you also made note of the conservation zone. Where or how would that apply?
So in 2014, we, I'll start with conservation zone. In 2014, we did apply a new zone, conservation zone. We chose to use that zoning along some of the tributaries running down to the La Havre. So you'll see it on Headbrook, on Wildbrook. Very spotty, just a few properties. Easy pickings almost. I think for the most part, might all be town-owned. The idea was next time. So this upcoming planning document review process, we would expand on that. So the La Havre River and the riparian edge along the La Havre is a prime candidate, as well as some of those other major tributaries coming down to the La Havre. It's early. So Jessica's not here. She would be the one to provide probably more accurate information with respect to when that plan review process is going to begin, but it will begin soon. It will take a while.
Yeah, okay. So but are you suggesting that this property might be looked at as a new conservation zone or the space around it, some space around it?
That was the suggestion by the attendee at the public participation meeting. That's not my suggestion at this point. But again, we're too early in that process, I think, to say anything definitively. Yeah. It's a candidate because it's, there's flood risk, it's along the La Havre River. But that's a, it's a big deal to apply conservation zoning to that many areas of town.
Sure. Other questions?
One more, I can. Nick, do you know how much they filled there? Because I remember they filled that input a bit here a few years ago.
Yeah, well, and I don't know the numbers. I've been searching for the flood mitigation plan that the property owners had done, and it was part of that development agreement process about 10 years ago. And then they did some work based on the recommendations. I haven't been able to put my fingers on it. So I don't know the level of fill. But it is a higher point there, and maybe just as a result of the work then.
Other questions? So just to be clear, this is to move forward with the public hearing to deal with the rezoning, not for the specific development? That will come back as part of the DA process. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Frazier?
Yes, Your Worship, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
That council for the town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the proposed MAP amendments of the land use bylaws as contained in Appendix A of Document 21-080A and schedule a public hearing for August 9, 2021 during the regular meeting of council.
Thank you. Seconded by, Council Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those, oh, you had a question? Sorry.
Just a comment. I'm going to be voting not in favor of this particular motion specifically because I think it's a little too early in the process to be rezoning this particular piece of land, given that we're going to be reviewing the LRDA relatively shortly, as I understand it. So I think it's just a bit premature, and that's why I'm voting on favor.
Thank you.
Against, yes.
Other comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is 7.2 Municipal Planning Strategy Amendments, the Active Transportation Plan. Okay, Senator Brown?
So these are staff-initiated municipal planning strategy amendments to reflect the 2020 Bridgewater Active Transportation Plan. Effectively, what's happening here is a reference to the 2008 Active Transportation and Connectivity Plan are being, that reference is being replaced with reference to the 2020 Bridgewater Active Transportation Plan. There are some small policy intent changes, therefore, these amendments are enabled in accordance with the municipal planning strategies implementation section. The next step is to conduct a public meeting, and that's scheduled for July 21st, and a detailed analysis, more detailed analysis. The analysis, the report on the meeting and draft amendments will be presented back to council at a future meeting for first consideration. So this is a briefing, and it's an announcement for the July 21st Public Information Meeting.
Thank you. And I see that Wednesday's edition of the breaker will have details of that as well for the public. Any questions on that? Okay. Thank you. Our next item is correspondence for information. We have a letter from Minister of Municipal Affairs in response to a letter that Mayor Davini sent on behalf of the region, essentially, with some of our concerns regarding the province's accessibility plan. Not concerns about being more accessible, we want to be more accessible to people, especially removing the barriers that are currently there. But we want to make sure that as the province says you need to do this, that the province also provides adequate level of support and funding. We don't want to just have things downloaded on us. And I know one of the concerns was if we weren't careful, the expectation that municipal government would fund private businesses to do renovations to make their private profitable business more accessible. So we just wanted to make sure we clarified our position that I don't think there's too many municipalities that are in a financial position to be funding private enterprise like that. So the letter is there for your perusal, and it will be posted online. Down to reports and recommendations, we have a RFP for the pump station design. And I know this is not the normal course of action because it's going to be recommended not to award this. And I see Mrs. Buchanan is here to walk us through why.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Pump Station 3 Design-Build-Piping Upgrades, RFP, was issued in May, early May 2021. It closed May 28th, and it was an RFP for the full rehabilitation of internal piping on half of the pump station, which is the pump station that's directly behind Sobeys and the mall. We issued it after having a significant pipe failure in December 2020, and we actually got one compliant bid. It was just about double the price that we had budgeted. We had $180,000, and it came in at $361,168.49 net HST. We had a couple of other concerns with the tender in addition to the price. Most importantly, the material delivery dates in the tender showed it would be about a 13-week delay from whenever we awarded till they could actually get the materials on site. And they have to be there in order for them to proceed with any of the work. So if there was any delay, it was going to put us well into the fall months. That's our critical flow months at all the pump stations. We get a lot higher volumes of I and I water, so it's very high risk for the contractor to manage those flows if things are going a little askew in the construction phase. And he also presented a 14-week construction schedule, which we were guaranteed we'd be in the September to probably January window for construction. So all of that is cause for great concern, and it could also lead to a lot more congestion for the mall and the Sobeys facility, which we weren't anticipating as part of this. We thought it would be a lot quicker. So given that information, we felt it was better, best to provide you with the recommendation that you not awarded this time because it was only going to construct or rehabilitate half of the pump station, and we know we have to do the other half. So for us at this stage, with this level of inconvenience and delay in the project, we thought it would be better to try and repurpose these construction funds, $180,000 in this fiscal year, to actually design the full station upgrade. And then we would try to accelerate the funds from 2029, '30 to do that construction into future years to allow us the full shot at once, less inconvenience for the neighbors, and hopefully we can hit that dry weather window and maybe see some cost savings in the overall construction. Any questions?
Questions from council? Appreciate the very straightforward explanation, makes sense. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Thorburn?
I would move that council for the town of Bridgewater not award RFP 2021-01 Pumping Station Number Three Design-Build-Piping Upgrades to the ones submitted better due to being 40% greater than the capital budget estimate.
Thank you. Seconded by, Council Conklin. Discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And we have a second motion there to repurpose the funds.
Okay, you want that?
Sure.
Oh, share, will you? Go ahead, share.
I'll make a motion that council for the town of Bridgewater repurpose the $180,000 capital budget amount in the 2021-22 budget year to design a full pump station number three upgrade or replacement to be tendered for the construction in a future year.
Thank you. Seconded by, Council Thorburn. Discussion on that?
Can I have a, ask a question?
You can, yes.
This is $180,000 that come in 50% lower. So we're looking at well over $500,000 or more to do the whole thing. Would that be correct?
Do we have, yes. She's going to come down and give us more detail than just my yes.
Yes, we're anticipating it will be probably in the $1 million or greater range.
Yes. Okay, thank you. That's $15 million's going up.
Do you regret asking your question?
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing done, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 10.2, you have your monthly building applications report. Things are moving along steady. We're matching 2019 as we go and well on track to be another big year in the town of Bridgewater. So if you have any questions to those, you can reach out to engineering, and they'll walk you through it. Our next Our next item is also for information for everyone's Lunberg County Senior Safety Program Report for June 2021. I know I say this every time, I do not know where we would be without this program, especially during the pandemic. What they do with the resources they have to be able to help the number of people they help is unbelievable. And we have probably two of the most hardworking people I've seen, again, doing so much with so little. So we are very fortunate in Lunberg County to have this. Number 10.4 Recommendation of the Development Officer and Heritage Advisory Committee for Designation of 126 Pleasant Street as a Municipal Heritage Property.
126 Pleasant Street. It's home of Greek Revival design with Italianate and Victorian architectural elements. It's built in 1894 and is considered a good representation of that era in the town's development. So the property is a past recipient of the Heritage Advisory Committee's Built Heritage Award. In April of this year, the property owners approached staff and the committee with an application to register the property as a municipal heritage property. The house was evaluated using the property, or the committee's evaluation form and subsequently discussed and voted on at a committee meeting. Form is included in council's report. Score of 75 was achieved and it's right at the cutoff between important and very important. As such, the Heritage Advisory Committee recommends that council directs the committee to complete registration process to designate the property at 126 Pleasant Street as a municipal heritage property.
Thank you. Questions from council?
That'd be number six right there.
That's correct. Second residential.
Second residential.
Second residential, okay. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Caldwell?
I'm ready. I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater direct the Heritage Advisory Committee to complete the registration process to designate the building at 126 Pleasant Street as a municipal heritage property under the Heritage Property Act.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. 10.5, we have our discussion session briefing notes from last week. And I think I would just note for the public, there's an item there in coordinated access and that presentation is uploaded to the town's website. And I would, actually, I thought it was incredibly interesting. So I would encourage people to maybe take a look at that, read it, learn what coordinated access is. Since last week's meeting, I've been Googling it and diving into it and it is something that is going to be certainly more prevalent across the country as we try to find more efficiencies in bringing programs and services together. So it's a term that people are going to hear more and more as we go forward. So again, I would encourage you to, not only to read that presentation, but as we go forward with our coordinated access system, hopefully we can engage the public and because some of the services that many people use in this community are going to be part of this. That's there. Any questions on that? Our next item is Hillside Pines Home for Special Care Society requests for a land donation. Mr. Brown, this is, you're getting your steps in today. You had to sit like the furthest, almost the furthest point from both podiums.
All right. Hillside Pines. A representative of the Hillside Pines Home for Special Care Society contacted the town about the acquisition of a town owned parcel located behind Hillside Pines and behind Pineview Apartments. It's actually located between those two buildings and the properties on Elizabeth Avenue. Town owns property back there because all of that property between Hillside Pines and the, call it Dawson Center, it was all town owned. It's the hospital, so this is a residue from that. So should council wish to sell the property, there are a number of options for council to consider. I should say that the home for Hillside Pines, Home for Special Care Society, they wish to build a dining room addition and thus necessitates the need for a little bit more land to the rear of the existing facility. There's the full property in question, about 40,000 square feet, approximately 40,000 square feet. Council could sell at market value, at less than market value, or donate the latter two being available because the society is a not-for-profit group. Staff also recognize that the building addition, this proposed dining room, doesn't need the full 40,000 or so square feet. A portion of that property would make sense. And so there's a 15,000 square foot portion that staff have identified that actually keeps intact what would be the Christie Street Road Reserve. So that 15, approximately 15,000 square foot portions, council could again sell at market value, sell at less than market value, or donate. So yeah, I'll take any questions.
Questions from council? Got the couple of options there. Deputy Mayor?
So Nick, the land swap option hasn't been broached with them or has been?
It has not been talked about with the Hillside Pines.
Just to confirm, the portion that is recommended to be conveyed or the council could considers 14,083 square feet and the estimated market value is 3,900, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
That's the smaller of the two options.
Yes.
Right. Yes.
Sorry, I hate to be specific, but 3,900 or 4,000?
Well, I mean.
It's 3,900. I have reported for 4,000. I don't have the form in front of me, but at the same point. I think the options section says 4,000.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And I was rounding. I apologize.
Which is great, yeah.
And if you refresh your eScribe, the actual, the price is in there because it should be in the motion, selling price? Other questions? Some, yes, please. Thank you.
I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the execution of a purchase and sale agreement to sell a 14,083 square foot portion of PID 60032356 for 3,900 to the Hillside Pines Home for Special Care Society for the purposes of carrying on an activity that is beneficial to the town and conditional that Hillside Pines Home for Special Care Society pay all costs associated with the land transfer.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Caldwell. Further discussion? Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving through this agenda quickly, our last item is 10.7 Application to Purchase Land Glen Allen Drive, Lot 27, Parcel B 106-A. Yes. So I see Mr. Powell is here to help us through this one.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell, council staff. So briefly, there was an application to purchase that was received by staff on June 23, 2021, and that offer was for subject land, $65,727. On June 5, this was presented to council in camera. I want to point out that the fair market value for this land, we had in the policy 91 land sales policy approved that the land in the Glan, budding in the Glan area be listed at $2,450 per linear foot. And based on this offer of $65,727, it does not meet that valuation. And so the recommendation is to decline the offer.
Thank you. Questions from council? I mean, that's a pretty straightforward explanation. Hearing none. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Thorburn?
I would still move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater decline the offer of $65,727 to purchase land on Glen Allen Drive, identified as PID number 60692984, Lot 27, Parcel A, PID number 60692894, remainder of Lot 106A, and PID 60698909, Lot 53.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further discussion? Question? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We've no business arising and unfinished business. We have an in-camera meeting after to deal with personnel matter. And I totally forgot at the beginning of the meeting for announcements to let council know that I have been selected as chair for the FCM Committee on Infrastructure and Transportation Policy. Could you repeat that? I wish I could. So I'm the new chair of the FCM's Committee on Infrastructure and Transportation Policy.
Congratulations.
Yeah. They may regret that, but no, I'm excited about that. It's something that really is important to us. We've had a lot of discussions even just today on infrastructure, so I'm excited about the challenging work ahead and part of that will include direct interaction with the ministers responsible at the federal level. So certainly pleading that case for communities our size, larger, smaller across the country. I'm excited about that. With no further business, motion to adjourn. Council Thorburn, seconded by Council Caldwell. We are adjourned.